Oh, okay. Yep. Are you gone?
Yes.
For next week?
I sent it to my mind thirty days. Don't have one in my mind.
Love, how's you? He's so happy.
I'll be though. I'm calling. Oh, no, I'm not. I'm calling.
Okay.
It's not. Oh, no, I'm calling.
I'm calling. Sorry. I'm calling order to the meeting. The Auburn City Council's study session will be held in person and virtually. John, can you do roll calls?
Deputy Mayor Brown.
Excuse?
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Rakes.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Excused.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Excused. Thank you. Sean, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Chair. The update to the Airport Advisory Board Annual Update has been added to the agenda.
Thank you. So our first thing is a briefing and it's for comprehensive emergency management and I believe that's by Director Hinman.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have props. I'm Dana Hinman. I'm the Director of Administration and I also oversee emergency management. And I'm here with one of our emergency management staff members, Tyler Turner.
Hi there.
And the three, my three props are hopefully things that you two are in possession of. And that would be your emergency backpack. Should look familiar. I thought about wearing it, but it's child's size. Your hard hat, just in case. And the most important thing, your comprehensive emergency management plan. Yes, all nods. Well done. We did it. Okay. So this briefing is to, we could sit here for a really long time. As I know, Councilmember Almer could attest and talk a long time about emergency management. But we are going to narrow the topic to really simply the council's role in emergency management and specifically in the comprehensive emergency management plan. There are many different roles within an emergency management planning, inside an incident, non-incident planning, and does require elected officials hold a very unique role. And it also can be a challenging role because what you want to do as a human, you're not allowed to do as an elected official. Well, you could, but it would make things very challenging for, for the response that, that may be in front of us. So if we do start to kind of go into some weeds, you'll, I, I hope you'll understand if I, if I may redirect the, the conversation. Because, like I said, we could, we could talk for a long time just on this, on this topic. So just first and foremost, the overarching is what emergency management is. It is the division's job to respond, respond and prepare for potential incidents. And when we think about an incident, we think about something that may be planned or unplanned. I mean, we typically don't want to plan for a disaster, but we might know something is coming, like a big storm, a weather-related event, those kinds of things. And of course, there's most of, many of which are, are unplanned things. Like maybe, well, I don't even want to say it out loud because it puts it into the universe and things might happen, like on the railroad tracks that are near us or some of the chemical plants that are near us that we, we hope don't happen. But that may go beyond the normal, a local response that is, that is available. And that's what an emergency management division is charged with and there's reasons for that. Our current program areas within the division, there are four. Incident stabilization, emergency plans, that's the big thing that we're talking about today. Training and exercises and education and outreach. And you can see there the difference, that's certainly not all-inclusive, but fairly comprehensive of, of the four program areas that, that we run and oversee. And a lot of it is internal, a lot of it is external. And so, and as you can see by the org chart, we're a little thin right now. Our manager position is currently vacant. Tyler Turner is sitting here with us. He's our EM coordinator. And we do have a part-time position that is unfilled and it's been unfilled for a while. We had a plan for that that did not come to fruition. That could have been, could have been a really cool thing, but to kind of share some, some EM duties with our fire authority. But they decided to hire their own full-time emergency manager, who is a person very familiar to us. So we're glad that we don't have to build a whole new relationship. If any of you are familiar with Kimberly Turhune, she's amazing. She's been with the VRFA for a long time in their PIO role. And she's moved over into the emergency manager's role there. And so now the fun stuff, the stuff that you get to do. So I wanted to give you just a little bit of the legislative history of emergency management as it exists here in Auburn. I've been here since the ground floor of it. Mayor Bacchus has been here through the, the ground floor of it. And basically was created in 2007 via ordinance. And what that did is that codified the emergency management organization for the city of Auburn. Also is in alignment with some state laws around emergency management. And all of this really kind of came together as a post nine eleven effort. After the attacks on September eleventh, it was realized that, well, not realized, I think fully understood that, that all incidents and all disasters are local and that it would be really important for there to be a national framework for how that response looks, regardless of where it happens in the nation, which community it's happening in. And so the ordinance was a requirement for several reasons. One is to set up the emergency management system and that ordinance is, says specifically that the city of Auburn will follow the National Incident Management System or the NIMS framework. And as in a lot of government things, especially federal government things, there are more acronyms than you can ever hope for. So you'll see a lot of them here. You'll hear us refer to NIMS and ICS and FEMA and all sorts of things. But that is kind of the basics of, of when it was started. And it was, like I said, stood up via ordinance back in 2007. The first CEMP was adopted by the city council at that time in 2009. The CEMP is required to be updated every five years. And this should be an update year, but the state has granted an extra year for cities due to the pandemic. So next year will be a CEMP update year. Some other things is each year, the council accepts a Washington, helps, well, approves us to accept a Washington State Emergency Management Performance Grant, the EMPG. That is a significant part of the funding of the division and has some very specific uses as to most other grant funds from other government agencies. The councils, the council members that were here during the pandemic, I think probably for the, probably about the first time in, in my recollection, were ratifying emergency proclamations by the mayor. Those, that's one of the functions that in, in an emergency, the mayor is granted certain powers outside of the, the regular powers of the office. And an emergency is one of those. So even so, she, at the time during the pandemic, during civil unrest, it issued several emergency proclamations. It still does kind of work backwards in that the council still needs to ratify that, that proclamation, that emergency proclamation can, can stay in effect for the time that it, it was, that it was put out there. And obviously your budget approvals, approvals for the emergency management functions that fall under the city council as well. So those are kind of some of the, the day in and day out legislative things that, that a council would be a part of. And I did just want to talk a little bit more about NIMS and NIMS compliance. You'll hear that a lot. I'm going to have Tyler talk a little bit about some of the trainings that are required for electeds within the NIMS compliance. And again, the National Incident Management System, it's codified via ordinance. It says, we will follow this and that allows for several different things as long as we stay. So that is the first part of the compliance is to say, yes, as a city, we're setting up this division and we are going to follow the NIMS framework. And it also requires that we maintain a point of contact to what that phraseology there is. That point of contact is basically naming an emergency manager. Some are director level, some are, there's different titling there, but basically a person that does oversee those emergency management functions within the organization. And the last thing is that incident personnel, and, and quotation marks, including elected officials, that receive the pertinent NIMS training. And that NIMS training is in alignment with all of the other federal requirements within the national framework. So Tyler.
So for NIMS compliance, so this goes back to the revised code of Washington 3852. And just to piggyback on a good chunk of what Dana has mentioned, the whole NIMS compliancing through the, through the federal government was, was done from presidential elect, directive, presidential directive number five. So that was when George Bush was in, was in office and it was post nine eleven. For us, a, a good portion of, of compliance in regards to council and employees is you are required to do two courses called IS seven, uh, one hundred and IS seven hundred. So not to be confused with ICS one hundred, which is, which, which people kind of get caught up on. And I'll probably confuse you even more, so I'm sorry for this. But IS stands for independent study. So if you go to the FEMA website, there's, there's a plethora of different free courses you can take and they're all IS one hundred, IS one oh one, IS two hundred or whatever. And like I said, you can go on there and browse for hours and hours and find all sorts of different training. In regards to compliance and us staying compliant in regards to the National Incident Management System, you're required to do I Independent Study one hundred and Independent Study seven hundred. And it's really a, a basic introduction to the incident command system and the National Incident Management System. That is typically done when you're onboarded with the city. So employees, when employees come on, they're onboarded. HR gives them a, a bunch of introductory training and within that, that package is the IS one hundred and seven hundred. In addition to, you know, compliance, if you will, maintaining an EM director and an EM program and the CEMP, which is what we're talking about tonight, is really what, what involves us staying compliant when it comes to the National Incident Management System.
Great. I'll pause here for any questions that might have popped into your council.
Do you have any questions?
A bunch, but I'll save them for the end.
So now, emergency plans. The city maintains quite a number of emergency plans for all sorts of different things, specifically within the Emergency Management Division. The, the biggest and best is the CEMP. And I did include just the table of contents in your packets. Let's just say for environmental reasons, but the plan itself is about two hundred and fifty pages long. It includes quite a lot of things that we, we will go over broadly as we, we chat tonight. And then the, the, it is a standardized plan and it's informed by quite a number of things. Like I said before, the National Response Framework is sort of kind of the overarching template by which we fit things into. And also the Washington State Emergency Management Division and our Pearson King County Offices of Emergency Management as well. And Tyler has been involved with pretty much the, the writing or rewriting of, of all of the plans we've had over the years. So I wonder if you could just touch a little bit about how that coordination works or what sort of approvals we need along the way.
Sure. So I'll, I'll start with the CEMP. So, and this, because the CEMP is really our, our master plan, if you will. And it's, this will be the third time for it being revised. So we have a good foundation in place, but when it comes to updating it, we will start with what we call an emergency management committee. So we've, we had this really up and going pre-COVID, due to some turnover and, and things of that nature. We haven't kicked that back up, but that will be started again later this year. Whether it's, it starts with our new emergency manager or myself and Dana. And that will be comprised of liaisons from every single department. And then from there, we will essentially select a planning team, whether it's those representatives or they're going back to the departments to select members to be a part of our planning team or planning committee. And then from there, at least for the CEMP, we will meet on a regular basis, probably monthly. And we'll just go over every section of the plan. So there's the, the basic plan, which is really an overarching overview of the plan itself. The next section is what you call emergency support functions, which is, I don't want to get into the weeds here, but different roles and responsibilities that are delegated to each department. So for example, ESF one is communications. So what departments are involved in communication, like during a disaster? What, ESF four is firefighting. Okay, so Valley Regional Fire Authority will play a role in that. ESF, I'm getting in the weeds, so I'll do one more. Mask care and sheltering. Our Parks Department is really heavily involved in mask care and sheltering. So that's another emergency support function. So as we continue, as we go along, we'll just continue to get the right stakeholders in the room. We'll go over the section, cross our Ts and dot our Is. If new information needs to be added, the new information will be added at that point or removed. I know we have, since our, our last revision, we have new departments and equity and, and we have a massive homeless initiative. So what kind of new components can we add to the CEMP to make us a bit more resilient? Things of that nature. And that'll go all the way through the third quarter of next year. So it's months and months and months until the point where we feel comfortable about it. We'll shoot it to the state. The state will look it over, either approve it at that point or kick it back to us with some feedback on what we need to update. So the CEMP is really a, a plan that even during a revision, we, you have, there's, there's some jurisdictions that are starting from the ground up. But we've, like I said, this is our third time, so we have a good foundation, but it's still a long process with, with revising it. A lot of people that have to be in the room to update. Continuum operations planning is similar in regards to the CEMP in that it's a living document. It's constantly needing updating, not, not just every five years, but really on a regular basis. And it's, you can do it different ways. You can do it by division or department. And really what we're, what we're saying is, is in the event of a major interruption in the city, how do we continue performing our essential functions? And who within our departments, this is what we call our essential personnel, which we can get caught up on when, with defining that. But what personnel do we need to continue performing those essential functions? If you will, what kind of equipment do we need? What kind of resources do we need and all that kind of stuff? And that is something that really we should be doing continuously. We do have plans in place, but they need updating. They haven't been looked at since, right, COVID, COVID kind of hit us pretty hard. So we do have plans. Cognitive government is very much similar. And the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is another one that will be involved in heavily in the next year, that is one where we aren't taking the lead. We are actually being annexed into the King County, King County's plan. So they're taking the lead on that. We did that, I think it was in 2019. So we kind of get hit wham bam with both the CEMP and the regional hazard mitigation plan. But we have a, a letter of intent to sign on to be annexed into their plan again as they're going through their updating process. So, and that'll involve myself, the new emergency manager and Dana. And then as we go along, if we need updating from our public works officials, police, our police department, so on and so forth, we'll get them involved.
Just a little snapshot, just focusing in on the CEMP. What it's designed to do is these five kind of, or six basic bullet points to minimize the effects of an incident, preparation in response to an incident, maximize population survival, which is, you know, a nice way to say, you know, keep people from being hurt or other, or fatalities. Preserving property. And, and this next one is where council would be heavily involved in regards to special policies, guidelines and procedures that will provide, you know, just provide us the, the answers we need as things go on in emergencies. And lastly, try to create a return back to as, as normal as we can. I think we're all learning that recovery from something major, say like a pandemic, isn't easy and it does take, it does take quite a lot in, in that recovery phase. But that's basically what it's designed to do. And this is basically in your, in just the table of contents that I provided you from our CEMP. And you can see there, it, it basically contains these three things, but all three of those things are quite, quite intensive and specific as far as the basic plan, the details of the ESFs and any of the support annexes. And like Tyler said, even the CEMP, each update is going to have quite a number of changes. Like in this upcoming one, I assume we're going to have a lot more on pandemic. I think it's just referenced in the 2019 plan. And there's probably going to be a lot more details and specifics on cybersecurity. And that's becoming probably the biggest topic of conversations among emergency managers, I am sure nationwide. And so these are things that, again, things change and you learn and you, you know, update and customize your plan to your unique situations. And then your roles. If we're not in an incident, you're doing something like you're doing today. You're familiarizing yourself with the plan. You're familiarizing yourself with the training that you need for your specific role within our organization, becoming familiar with your role during an incident. They're, they're very, very different things. And, and like I said before, we may come forward with some regulations or policies that will help our city become more resilient. We may get another grant that we need your approval to accept. And so even when we're not in the middle of an incident, there's still a lot going on from, from legislative side by which we need a lot of help. Excuse me. And then when we are in an incident, the number one thing is for, for our elected officials to provide policy guidance and resources as, as we go along. I think, you know, the example of the mayor issuing emergency proclamations is one thing, but, you know, we'll have you all in a room and we may need you to make snap decisions on something because we're resourcing or we need to spend money in a way that we normally wouldn't spend it or suspend something that may need to be suspended in order to, to respond to something. And also just understanding that particular role within the ICS system, the incident command system. And, and then policy coordination with other government agencies and stakeholders. We'll be working with the county, with the state, with lots of other agencies. The Valley Regional Fire Authority, that's a different taxing authority. We don't oversee their operations. So we may need, you know, our electeds to be kind of on top of things. So you'll, you'll get to be in a room, probably with lawyers and me and, and trying to, you know, figure it all out. It's kind of chaotic and not fun. So just a graphic, that's on, on the right there is a, one of our drills that we had several years ago. That is our EOC. If you haven't visited, please contact Tyler or I so you can go up and see the EOC and see what it's all about. When you set up an EOC, that is kind of your basic sections that you will have that will build out if the, if things require. If the incident becomes a larger and larger, then more of those colored boxes will be populated within that room. And you can see there the policy group where you are and the EOC where you're not. And that is kind of, that's the tough part of, of, because you're people and this is your community and you care and you want to be out there helping or you want to be in the EOC and making sure everybody has pizza and water, which is, you know, Tyler and I'll take care of that. You'll, you'll be kind of off, you know, doing your policy things and I apologize in advance if we have to tell you to go back to your room. We, we do activate the EOC on occasion. And so this is kind of a listing of the recent activations that we've had. If we do activate the EOC, it will be at one of three levels. And as government can be, it can be a little odd because the highest number is the lowest level of activation, but that is what it is. So if we're at a level three, we're monitoring. The majority of that list up there probably was sitting at a level three. Were we at level two when the president came? Nope, okay. Okay, yeah. So we, you know, we do open up kind of at a level three where we're monitoring. And, you know, if, if things do, do grow, we, like I said, that, that work chart will grow as well. But so, and I think, oh, and the timeline. Tyler already went over this with you, but this is what the 2025 legislative timeline will look like for you. And we will start in earnest, probably planning this fall of putting working groups together. And then beginning of next year, we will be actively revising along with our stakeholders. And late fall, early winterish time, we hope to reach completions and get our approvals from, from our various state and county entities as we go along and put it in front of you for approval towards the end of next year.
Thank you both for your presentation. I whispered to Tyler, I don't have any of that equipment, so if I'm supposed to have it.
Yay.
Work on getting you some.
We'll get right on that. Councilmember Rakes.
Any questions, council? Councilmember Baldwin?
Yeah. So where to start? So maybe starting from the continuity perspective with the vacant position, what would be the timeframe for rehiring against either the roles for the manager or assistant?
Say that one more time.
The timeframe for vacancies within the emergency management area?
Timeframe for vacancies, like when are we going to have somebody hired?
Yeah. Do we have a timeframe that we would like?
We have started the process, but there may be some changes coming forward. So we paused that for right now, but we're ready to start recruiting whenever we kind of finalize what's next.
Okay. Are we expecting that finalization to happen in the budget cycle or?
Most likely.
There's really any budget impact?
Probably not. No, I don't think there's any budget impact to it.
Yeah. And then from a continuity perspective with the current vacancies, are those duties falling to Tyler or is that articulated in the response plan for who's on the hook for manager duties or assistant duties?
For the most part, falling to Tyler. Tyler and I are kind of sharing in the things that, that need to be taken care of at the moment.
Any other questions, council? Councilmember Baldwin?
I want to make sure. And then do any of our existing plans include or assume the participation of the specialized Boeing firefighters? Recently locked out. I know they're back to work now, but going through that period of a number of weeks where they were not working and accessing their facilities, I'm just curious if when we go through our revamp, if we have them identified like in the section that you mentioned related to.
Sure. So I, I don't believe.
Sure, so I, I don't believe there, at least the firefighting portion of Boeing isn't directly listed. I know that when we get the Emergency Management Committee back up, Auburn Boeing, their site actually just, I mean by recently, maybe in the last year, year and a half, they, they hired an emergency manager. So when we start really updating the C E M P and getting the external components in place, he will have a big role in there or some kind of role.
So basically, we account for that. So there's several kind of special situations in Auburn. One is the railroad and they, we, we get participation to a degree or at least try to have familiarity with each other's capacities and, and what they do and don't do. And so, and I know a lot of that is with B R F A as well of the kind of, and firefighting specifically or incident response.
Okay. Because, yeah, I was just going to ask that in whatever revamp that we keep an eye out for that and just be cognizant that if we are assuming that that organizational unit is there and available and trained for what they do, that things could come up where they wouldn't be. And so just from a, again, that continuity perspective, whatever readiness, we need to be mindful too. And then in that same vein, as you mentioned with the railroad, if there are any lessons learned coming out nationally related to the East Palestine derailment that happened in Ohio, where they had considerable chemical spills and things of that nature, if there's anything that we need to be incorporating into our plan going forward so we can do a better job of containment, would be a question or kind of a call out.
Yeah. So the, the railroad safety has been elevated over the years in several different ways. Years ago, it was the oil trains, the oil cars that were coming through. And, you know, I think derailments anywhere do raise level of concern. And it's, I would say varying levels of relationship building. For example, I know our public works directors, a lot of times it's kind of, I know for us, it's, it's personality based. You, there's somebody there and there's someone you have a good contact with and there's better exchange of information. And then, you know, so our experience has been that it's kind of, kind of peaks and valleys. And I know you had mentioned, Mayor, that the B R F A had kind of stood up a little bit more of a program with the railroad in, in regards to response.
Yes, and you'll also realize that most of the trains coming through Auburn are going slow. They're not the fast trains where you're going to have those derailments. One more question, so we don't hold them up. So Councilmember Baldwin, does anybody else have any questions?
Comment.
Or comments?
After.
After, okay. Councilmember Baldwin?
Yeah, I was also curious what the status was with the CERT trainings that are normally organized through the department. Are those going to be continuing or, and that would be our Community Emergency Response Team training.
Sure. They're going to continue. I had one, it's the first time I've ever had to cancel. I was in a, to get team out here, but I was in a car accident where I needed back surgery. So I had one scheduled for May, it was a full class, but I had to, like, two weeks out, cancel it. So I plan to do one in September, September, October. And then until we kind of are back to full staff, I'll, I'll, I'll try to continue that two a year. When we get probably another emergency manager and then maybe an additional person filling that, that, that third role, I'll probably bump it up to three or four. When we were at three people previously, we were doing four a year, so, and offering in a different, different schedule. So I'd like to get it back up to that, but it's, it's tough being limited with staff.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
Quick question referring to CERT. Do you provide multiple opportunities, say for instance, two classes, different timeframes? And then what's the capacity for CERT?
Right, and that's, so that's, maybe I worded it wrong. So when we were offering it four times a year, the one time would be, you know, over six weeks, a Tuesday and a Thursday evening. In the summer, we have one offering where we just knock it out, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, they're eight hour days. The one I'm going to do in the fall will be a bit longer and it'll just be Thursday evenings. Was there a second part to your question?
Yeah, the capacity, what's your, with the cap on the, on the class size?
Twenty-four students. Yep. That's how many people can fit in the E O C.
Councilmember Mark?
I have a comment. I'm a graduate, class thirty-nine CERT. So I was wondering why you didn't get emailed to come to be part of the drill, so now I get my answer. I will be waiting for your email because I'm so good to be vetted.
She's incredible at our, she gives our students a run for the money.
I will wait to get it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so moving on. Kate, do you have any report on the Ready?
Yeah, I do. So the Ready Coalition is currently working through project prioritization, and so that activity is currently ongoing, has been happening with different breakout groups from the coalition, where we've got, so for example, I'm working with Director Henman around what activities council could be doing and bringing forward from a ready perspective. Likewise, staff are breaking out kind of into their unique areas. So that's being prioritized and will be handed back to our consulting group for consolidation. And that's that next step that is occurring. And I believe tomorrow, there'll be an initial show and tell with the I A A T, pardon me, the inclusive Auburn team to review progress on that so far.
Thank you. Okay, so our next item on the agenda is the Airport Advisory Annual Update. And Director Gal?
Yes, and Tim Minzides, our Airport Manager and our Board Chair, Andrea Crase, will be giving you a brief overview of what we've been doing at the airport.
Good evening.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. So, thank you for having us tonight. Every year, the Airport Board, the Airport Board Chair and myself come to the council and present an annual update. That's part of our task to keep the council apprised of what's going on at the airport and what's happened. So tonight, Andrea and I are going to talk about what we did last year, what we're planning to do this year, and then just a quick plug for Airport Day coming up in July. So what we did last year, just the high points, we began a big hangar enclosure project. We had an existing building that did not have hangar doors or walls, and that is very much the demand for space here. We have a fifteen-year waitlist for that type of space. We were able to utilize a low interest loan and address that. And that project is now complete. Our tenants love the project, the tenants that were able to get in that hangar. And with that project too, we were able to replace some old, very old doors and get those with new, so we were able to update two hangars. We also completed a mural. Pete Bowers, that, the murals in the bottom hand right, that maroon and yellow looking airplane was, kept that plane. And that plane actually, that type of plane hangs in the Museum of Flight. And he based that at our airport and has a great history with some traditional pictures we have of him and, and the airplane. And so we, we painted a mural dedicated to him and that airplane that was kept at the airport. Then the next one, you'll see that blue taxiway light looking thing with wood is the Fly Washington Passport Program. So every year, the Fly Washington Program, Passport Program is programmed the airport heads up with the coalition of other airports. And pilots fly around the state and each airport has a stamp and you get a jacket and patches and it's just an incentive to get pilots to go out and fly and generate economic activity and, and impact to the communities that those airports serve. And as part of that program, they have a food drive every fall. And it, it's become a friendly rivalry. This is a traveling trophy. Mayor will recall, we won it two years ago and had a really nice presentation with the food bank, and so we got it back. And I think Bremerton Airport's probably our number one contender, but we're, we're fighting hard. Our tenants have really come behind that and it's, it's been a fun program. Then in August, we changed the common traffic advisory frequency. So despite common knowledge, every, the general public thinks that every airport has a control tower. We do not. We have, there's about ten, there's a hundred and thirty public use airports in the state and only about ten of them have control towers. The rest have these common traffic advisory frequencies. So we would go flying and our, our airport has a frequency where we position report where the airplane's at. Well, ours was shared with multiple airports and it was very congested, so we were able to change it and significantly improve safety at the airport by changing that. It's been a very good upgrade. Then you'll see the Auburn, that we were able to pay fifty-foot-high letters on our hangars. Those are the six city-owned hangar, six of the ten city-owned hangars the airport owns. If you take off out of C-TAC and you're taking off southbound, you should be able to see them because they're huge, but that was intentional. Just again with like the mural program, try to create a sense of place, try to create a fun environment, not just this sterile, everything's painted the same color type of deal. So that was fun. And then we had a very successful Airport Day. I'll talk a little bit more about Airport Day and what we have planned this year, but it's been a very growing and exciting event that the airport hosts to get the community out on the facility. And then next is Andrea talking about our key result areas that the, the count, the board came up with every November for what staff is working on together with the board for this year, 2024.
So for this year, it's been a pretty exciting year at Auburn. We've had continued hangar development, as Tim mentioned, we've enclosed some of our open hangars. And then my, my personal favorite is Myro got new hangar doors, so we're excited about our new hangar door.
I'll, I'll also add with that, we hope to have a lease. I hope to see you at the next study session or possibly the following one with a lease for significantly more hangar development at the airport. So we're very excited to, to bring that before the council. And I'll, I'll also have a piece for the council that kind of brings everyone up to speed on the stipulations and restrictions as an F A funded airport for developing and executing leases at our airport.
We've also been working on middle ramp development and office space usage within the, the building. We'll put a plug in for a changing table for babies in the bathrooms. That would be great. Our next one is the annual review of the 2024 Airport Marketing Focus. Do we do that every year to try and figure out the best way to market the asset that Auburn has in, in the airport? Airport expansion areas, we're always looking at ways to acquire the property around, around the airport and, and make things even better than Tim has already been able to do. The Airport West Side Environmental Analysis has really been done for the A W O S and it's pretty much complete. And then the Visible Approach, Instrument Approach has also been complete and all the pilots are very happy about it.
Yeah, we were able to, that was years of work, but May fif, May sixteenth, we had, were able to improve and have a new instrument approach that will allow pilots to get into the airport. And we already had one, but this one is significantly improved and will allow pilots to get into the airport in inclement weather. And then last but not least is Airport Day. So Airport Day, I know some of the council have come out in previous years and we, we invite you and look forward to having you again this year. It's, it's gearing up to be bigger and better than all the previous years. The Chinook helicopters you see in the bottom left picture is still planning to come out. I don't think we're getting free fries this year, but we have overwhelming response of food trucks and it's completely free for the community. And the really capstone event is the Free Flights for Kids Ages Eight to Seventeen, which are, are donated by local pilots. And again, it's, it's July thirteenth. Well, shout out to Ingrid. As the event grows, it's becoming very, very, the airport staff is three full-time people. It's becoming a challenge and Ingrid's been able to head up and getting more volunteers throughout public works. And without that support, we would, we're, it's, it's already a very large event for us to manage, but with that has made it more manageable and allow us to improve it and grow it every year. With that, that is the end of our presentation. I'll take any questions.
Thank you. I do have a question. Have you ever looked at or has it ever been discussed to do any free flights for like autistic kids that might be over eighteen or special needs?
It'd be on the individual pilots.
Okay.
I've actually done that myself at another airport and that was just a one-on-one relationship. If someone came to us, I could probably link them up with a pilot who would be willing to do that and.
Pilots are usually pretty willing to.
Yes.
Jump in and make opportunities happen.
Yeah, I just happened to be there last year and I overheard a couple talking about that and so I was curious if that was ever set up.
I think one, we did fly one, actually in that last picture might have been, there was a pilot who flew that and man, that story, and the, the way the pilot felt after that was, it was just special. He, this kid was over the moon ecstatic about that flight.
That would be awesome. Council, any questions? Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
I'm super excited to talk to you guys. So I have a couple of questions along the lines of your board. How many serve on your board? How many committees do you have subsiding from your board? Do you talk about fundraising? Just kind of give me a little overview if that's okay.
I can answer some of the questions. There's seven of us. I don't believe that there are any committees, subcommittees.
You're on the.
Okay, no, you're right, and I've not made a single meeting. Sorry. There's one subcommittee to basically develop some informational boards to place around the perimeter of the airport, external to the fences. So, you know, at the, the parking lot, just on the south end, a lot of people go and park and watch planes. And so we thought we'd explain like the traffic pattern, the types of planes you're seeing, how pilots communicate with each other and kind of the basics of flight. And then your last question was, oh gosh, I can't even.
Fundraising.
Oh, fundraising, yes, fundraising. Tim does a lot of that through the government. I don't know the rules for accepting other sorts of funds. I know that some of the murals have been fundraised for, and money's donated to have particular things painted, but.
Was there anything specific regarding fundraising?
Fundraising? No, I'm just, I was just curious, like, just curious about fundraising with, with your board. Do you do direct communication with each other or does that run, like, how do you guys?
Yes. Yes. We, Ingrid and I set up our meetings and work with them on a regular basis on our meetings and advise them of things that are going on if we think that affects them, et cetera. And, and fundraising, the airport's an enterprise fund. There are like the murals and then Airport Day because we're, but we, we do operate in the black and, and, but barely. So we, I, I try to get sponsors for Airport Day, which we've done and people have participated in. And those are really, the murals and the Airport Day are really the biggest things we do for fundraising. Other than that, the, the airport itself does sustain the operation of the, the airport.
Okay, I have more, but I'll let the other council members.
And can I just add a little bit onto that? So I think maybe just backing up a little bit and explaining a little bit more about what the Airport Advisory Board is. So it's an advisory board to the airport staff and to the city council, and it has very specific responsibilities as listed in the code for those areas that they actually look at. One of those key things that they do is they do review the rates that we set out there for the tenant spaces, as well as they look at our rules and procedures that we require for all tenants that are there. But their main focus is more operations of the airport, not so much fundraising or other things like that, simply because the airport at this point is self-funded through that enterprise and, and the rates that it charges to its tenants.
Thank you.
If that helps.
Any other question? Councilmember Baldwin?
Yeah, I think the last time we had had a presentation, you were speaking to the south end of the airport where there's the park and ride that's right there. Are we having any continued issues with people sort of jumping the fence to cut through property? Has that been stopped?
No, so we had put in a temporary fence and since then that, we hadn't had any issues since that. And then if you've been down there lately, the airport was just closed for thirty days with a major rehabilitation and other project that I think I've been talking to the council for three years, but finally got that done. And with that, an eight-foot fence was put in. And that was actually part of the, the sign piece is because so many people. in, and that was actually part of the, the sign piece, is because so many people use that, we wanted to have that community interaction with people.
Okay.
Any other questions, Council? Councilmember Baldwin?
Yeah, I was also curious, within, you know, what we've seen, I think in the past year, we've had two planes that have come down, not landing at the airport. Has there any detail on what the root cause was for those failures?
We're not gonna talk about those on the council floor, that's not for, that's not for them to discuss.
I think there, one, the one that most recently happened is certainly under N T S B investigation, so we can't comment on that one. I'm not sure where the investigation is on the first one.
It's still, the N T S B usually takes a.
They take a while.
Year to come out with the results.
Understood. When those investigations are completed, do we have an update?
They'll be, when they're.
They're published.
They'll be public.
When it's public, can we have an update?
Any other questions, council?
Nothing. Can you go to the last photo? She just wanted to mark something, because she's one of the Girl Scout in Auburn, and she just a graduate, so we wanna, the last photo, Jen, the last one. Sorry, I'm just.
No.
I was so happy, I think the Girl Scout, they love this event, and I will make sure to share it with Auburn Service Unit to make sure, for them to come, especially she just graduated high school.
Yes, please.
So thank you.
Excellent.
I wanna make sure just to have it posted.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Thank you. I was just gonna have kind of a last comment, which was, when I had attended the Auburn Airport Day, one of the vendors that you had invited out to participate was providing photos for families, and one of the things that we had heard is that those photos were being provided back to attendees for free. So for some families, that may be, you know, one of the few times they grab a family photo. So I just really wanna give kudos to the thoughtfulness in how you've been organizing and planning that event, because I think it means quite a lot to a number of people. And I love the new Auburn letters for the place building, so.
Thank you. And they're coming out again for the photos for the third year, and we heard similar comment, I might have received that from you, and that was just completely heartwarming when you have family saying, this is the only family photo I've ever received.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I like it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. At, at Airport Days, it's just a fabulous thing to do.
Thank you.
Council, we're at the end of our agenda, so meeting adjourned.
No, no, no.
One more?
One.
Oh, wait, I missed this one, sorry. Last thing on our agenda is an ordinance, and Director Gell?
Yes, so Amber Olds will be coming up to do a quick briefing for the Zayo telecommunications franchise that you'll have in front of you for decision coming up.
Sorry, Amber, I thought you just came to visit us.
Good evening, so, as Ingrid said, I'm here to discuss draft ordinance number sixty-nine forty-two for the Zayo Group LLC franchise agreement, F R N twenty-two dash zero 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 three. As I previously stated, any, in previous presentations, any telecommunications company that wants to locate their facilities in the city's public ways are required under Title Twenty and federal law and state law to obtain a franchise agreement with the city of Auburn. Zayo provides telecommunications services that include telecommunications capacity, dark fiber, transmission of voice, data, and electronic information, non-switch dedicated private line services, high-capacity fiber optic transmission services, all to firms, businesses, and institutions throughout the city over their existing fiber optic cable. Zayo does not currently provide residential service, but they may do so at some point in the future. The existing facilities were previously authorized under franchise agreement number twelve dash forty-one, which is now expired. Zayo has applied for the new franchise agreement so that they can continue to operate their existing facilities and serve their customers inside and outside of the city. The application was reviewed and kind of be complete per the city's code requirements. The proposed agreement is consistent with city standard form agreement and other agreements of this type and would be valid for a term of fifteen years. The agreement is citywide to cover all public ways within the city so that Zayo can continue to serve all areas of the city and also cover future expansion of their facilities. Future expansion, alterations, repairs, upgrades, improvements to their existing facilities would be managed through the city's construction permitting process, which is a requirement of the franchise agreement. And bringing this agreement forward to council for review, city staff has verified that it meets the code requirements that you must base your determination on. A public hearing is scheduled for June seventeenth for the city council meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we are adjourned. Thank you.